Ninth regular session of the 35th SUS Student Assembly is called to order. All rise please for the opening ceremonies.
Almighty, loving, and merciful Father, Creator of everything and source of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We adore you for your infinite wisdom and power. We praise you for you are the only one who can direct our lives. We thank you for all the gifts you have bestowed on us, your children. Without you, we are nothing. You are the ultimate teacher. You teach and instruct us in the way of life and guide us into your will. May we teach others with the wisdom and love that we receive from you. Remind us that our teaching is an act of worship to you. Amen.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim, alhamdulillah, rabbil alamin, ar rahmanir rahim. Malikiyaumiddin, iyyaka na'buduwa, iyyaka nastain, ehdin as sirotal mustaqim. Sirotal ladina ana'amta, alaihim gairil magdubi, alaihim walad dholin, amin. Rabbana dalamna wa ilayka tawakalna, wa ilayka anabna, wa ilayka almasir. Rabbana atinapi dunya hasana, wa pil akhirati hasana tawakin adabannar. Rabbana waj'alna muslimaini lakaw minzuriyati na'ummata muslimatan lak. Wa'ari na manasika na watub alayna inna kandata wa burrahim. Rabbana dalamna anpusana wa ilam tagpela na watarhamna lanakunamna min alhasirin. Rabbana takabbal minna inna kandasa min alim, watub alayna inna kandata wa burrahim. Birahmatikaya arhamurrahimin walhamdulillah.
Thank you, representatives who may be seated. The Chair will now give the floor to the Secretary to conduct roll call.
Good afternoon, representatives. Once I call your name, please respond with present. College of Agriculture, Representative Inao. Representative Inofario. College of Arts and Sciences, Representative Bitong. Representative Bitong. Representative Daskitado. Representative Daskitado. Representative Dezon. Representative Dezon. Representative Hakoba. Representative Hamera. Representative Hamera. Representative Mohammed. Representative Tevez. Representative Valisser. College of Business and Administration, Representative Baiz. Representative Baiz. Representative Chong. Representative Chong. Representative Estol Yoso. Representative Ozawa. Representative Villaflores. College of Computer Studies, Representative Rosell. Representative Gunot. College of Engineering and Design, Representative Almagro. Representative Almagro. Representative Valbon. Representative Valbon. Representative Arbon. College of Education, Representative Isada. Representative Isada. Representative Brandon. College of Law, Representative Makarubo. Representative Maputi. College of Mass Communication, Representative Malolot. Representative Samson. College of Nursing, Representative Ragay. Representative Rowa. College of Performing and Visual Arts, Representative Damayo. Representative Kalasang. Representative Kalasang. Divinity School, Representative Arnasio. Representative Arnasio. Representative Umamba. Graduate School, Representative Amante. Institute of Clinical Laboratory Sciences, Representative Kalumpang is present. Representative Kamnade. Institute of Environmental and Marine Sciences, Representative Hoxon. Representative Valle. Institute of Rehabilitative Sciences, Representative Andres. Representative Lopez. Representative Lopez. Junior High School, Representative Abas. Representative Abas. Representative Cabanas. Representative Cabanas. Representative Hernandez. Representative Hernandez. Representative Lorente. Representative Lorente. Representative Visoro. Representative Visoro. Medical School, Representative Chavez. Representative Goretcho. School of Public Affairs and Governance, Representative Makahi. Representative Minalang. Senior High School, Representative Cadiz. Representative Cadiz. Representative Carde Pilio. Representative Ferrer. Representative Lim. Representative Narciso. Representative Narciso. Representative Reynasha. Mr. Chair, 34 responded to the call.
Thank you, Secretaries. With 34 responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. And the Chair would like to add, and would like to thank as well, our Speaker Pro Tempore for taking the role as acting Assistant Secretary for the day. Moving forward, we'll now be reading the Order of Business for the day. First, for the ninth regular session. We have called to order, opening ceremonies, roll call, reading of communication letters consisting of excuse letters and resignation letters. Unfortunately, we have received four total resignation letters. The Order of Business has since been updated since I sent it last night. The resignations come from Representative Baiz of CBA, Representative Chong of CBA, Representative Kamnade of ICLS, and Representative Narciso of Senior High School. And next is the approval of minutes from the eighth regular session. Our unfinished business, which is, which consists of resolutions. First, a resolution establishing a code of conduct for student council auditors, and a resolution requesting the SU administration through the CCSO to install additional CCTV cameras at SU Gym. And election of committee on appropriation members consisting of 18 members. Discussion of the agenda for the day. We have, suppose, we have three budget proposals. Other matters, announcements, adjournment, and closing ceremonies. Are there any motions to adopt the Order of Business? Representative Ozawa.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to adopt, I move to adopt the Order of Business for today's regular session.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any discussions before that? InfoTech, do we have the wireless microphones? How many do we have? Okay, can we have one for down here, please? Because... Does that work? Okay. Representative Villaflores.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to strike out budget proposals from today's agenda due to the reason that we haven't had approved semester appropriations yet.
Properly moved and seconded. So to further expound once again. Article seven, section 14, if I'm not mistaken of the Constitution states that we cannot, basically, we cannot approve or discuss budget proposals without the semester appropriations. This was an oversight on my part and from the President's part. So we apologize for that and for the confusion there. But with that, we cannot discuss or tackle these budget proposals. So with that, are there any objections to the motion? Going once, going twice, chair is none, motion is carried. Further amendments to the Order of Business? Representative Valisser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we interchange the order of resolutions to have the second resolution de-prioritized, Mr. Chair.
Any second to the motion? Properly moved and seconded. Any objections? Going once, going twice, chair is none, motion is carried. Any further discussions needed? Allow the Chair to make the amendment first. Okay. Further amendments? Representative Ozawa.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to withdraw the second resolution from today's agenda.
The Code of Conduct Resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do you have a reason for withdrawing it? Actually, I don't think we can, we can't strike it out from the Order of Business. Well, when we get to your resolution, that's when you can make the motion to, you can make the motion to withdraw it. Because it's still unfinished business. So it's still, it's still technically part of the agenda.
Noted, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Suggestion lang, you guys can just take, you know, just take off the microphone from the stand and just pass it around. Or you guys don't have to stand up anymore. Okay, further discussions? Going once, going twice? All those in favor of adopting the Order of Business with these amendments, please raise your right hand. Okay, not in favor? With 34 in favor, you're not in favor. Motion is carried. The Order of Business for the ninth regular session is adopted. Moving forward, we'll proceed to our excuse letters, which has likewise also been updated because we received, earlier today, I received another excuse letter and in accordance with the House rules, the matter is of urgent family matters. So it's still within, it can still be accepted and considered. So with that, we'll be reading our first excuse letter, which is coming from, just a heads up to InfoTech, the folder. Okay, good, you already, it's in the folder. Okay, thank you. First comes from Representative Rowa requesting... Is this the right one? Is, okay, wait, is this the correct one, Representative? Okay. Representative, is this the excuse letter you meant to send? It's for the fourth special session. Wait, let me check the email again, please. Okay, looking at the email again, this is the one that, this is the file that you sent. However, we've already approved the minutes for this. So we cannot, so we can no longer entertain this excuse letter. So apologies for that. Okay. The date is, the date is for, is October 19, but it's supposed to be eighth special session. So, I know, but, but I feel like this, according to our, upon discussion with the Secretary, this may have been a technical error on your letter. So with this, I'd like to refer the, I'd refer the recommendation to the Committee on Impeachment. What are your, what are your, what would be your recommendation to the Assembly in regards to this matter? Since this is a technical error on an excuse letter where the date is correct, but the session, the decision of the session labeled is incorrect. Because the email says eighth special session.
If I may be recognized, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
May I suggest that the representative be able to send a revised excuse letter within today's session? And we can tackle the excuse letter once again during the other matters.
Okay. Is the floor amenable to this decision? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll not be reading this letter. So Representative Rowa, you have within the next hour and a half to send a, to resubmit an excuse letter. Thank you very much, Committee on Impeachment. Next letter. We have Representative Arnasio from Divinity School requesting absence from today's session. Are there any, are there any motions? Representative Brandon.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept Representative Reynasha's excuse letter.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any objections or discussions? Going once, going twice? Without objection, the motion is carried. Excuse letter is accepted. Next letter is from Representative Bitong. Requesting excuse from today's session as well due to family emergency. There any motions? Representative Valisser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the excuse letter of Rep. Bitong.
Properly moved and seconded. Any objections, discussion? Going once, going twice? Chair is none, approved. Next letter is from Representative Hamera, which was sent this morning. But again, it falls within the urgent emergency matters. So this is still within consideration. There any motions? Representative Villaflores.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept Representative Hamera's excuse letter.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair is none, approved. Now, we'll now read, we'll now proceed to the resignation letters. Due to the sensitivity of some of the reasons of these, we will not be publicizing them, but they will still be publicly acknowledged as resignations. Requesting Infomedia not to, not to present them. But each representative here has furnished a copy of it in the Order of Business folder. So you guys have the liberty to read it. So our first resignation comes from Representative Baiz of the College of Business Administration. I will not be reading the reason for resignation. That the respect for the representatives resigning. So with this... Just to check, we're not live streaming. Are we still live streaming? We're just recording, thank you, okay. So with this, Representative Baiz's excuse, ah, sorry, resignation letter, since there is no, since there are plans to withdraw the resolution that she is an author of, we can just recognize this resignation right away. Is that okay with her co proponents? Okay. With this, the Chair recognizes the resignation of Representative Baiz, a CBA representative. The next resignation comes from Representative Chong from CBA as well. Unfortunately, this also will leave us open, or leave the position of Assembly Treasurer open. So in the other matters section of the day, we will be opening another election, the election for treasurer. So likewise, we'll not be reading the letter, but you are free to read it yourselves, representatives. So with this, the Chair recognizes the resignation of Representative Chong. Next one, we received, the last two we received earlier today. First, the next letter is from Representative Kamnade of ICLS. Also, we'll be recognizing the resignation of Representative Kamnade. Next, last one is Representative Narciso of Senior High School. This as well, also leaves the open... Was that a bird? Okay. Okay, so this leaves, this leaves the position of Deputy Majority Floor Leader open. So we'll be opening an election again later on. So the Chair recognizes the resignation of Representative Narciso. With this, allow the, the Chair would like to put on record his thanks to the four representatives who have resigned. Although it's unfortunate that they are leaving the student assembly, still, their service and efforts within the first semester are greatly appreciated. And of course, they are felt by the students. And with this, on behalf of the 35th Student Assembly, we wish the four of your representatives all the best and we will continue on the fight that we have all started together. So thank you to the four representatives. Please, a round of applause for them. With this, unfortunately, it's been made aware to the speaker that there is no active SUSG Komelek right now. Although Committee on Appointments approved the appointment of Komelek Commissioners, it has been made my awareness that they have resigned from their position. So that leaves us without a Komelek to figure out the, to conduct a special election for these officers, on these representatives. So with this, I will be contacting the respective governors of each. Some of, some of these colleges have their own Komeleks. So we'll request them to conduct their own special election. And if they are unable to, or they don't have a Komelek, we'll have an appointment system. This is because this is a gray area that doesn't, that the Constitution doesn't, Constitution and SUSG law doesn't provide for if there's no other candidates in succession or there's no SUSG Komelek present. So we'll just be adopting the previous practice now. We'll leave it up to the respective academic units on how to fill in the gaps of their representatives. So with this, hopefully, this will be resolved soon and we can be back to full capacity. So once again, we wish the best to our, to our now former representatives. Moving forward with our Order of Business, we go to our approval of previous minutes of the, from the eighth regular session. Are there any motions to adopt? Representative Tevez. Properly moved and seconded. Can we present it, please, on the screen? And the Chair will give a few seconds or a few, a minute or so for the representatives to read through and see if there's any amendments needed. Once again, any excuse letters passed in regards to the eighth regular session will be, will be made effective and implemented in the minutes after today. So, reps, are there any amendments? Representative Makarubo.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to amend number 45. Number 45, where I ask why there is no price ceiling. The spelling for ceiling is the one there. It's not the S-E-A-L-I-N-G, it's C-E-I-L-I-N-G.
We'll take that as a technical amendment, thank you.
Thank you.
Secretary, please take note. Further amendments needed? Representative Arbon. Microphone, please.
Hello, thank you very much for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to amend number 132. Number 132 states that Rep. Arbon raised the point of Article 6, Section 9. There's a word missing, which is inquiry.
Okay, we'll take that as a technical amendment. Secretary, please take note. Thank you for that, Representative. Further amendments needed? Representative Ozawa.
Amendment on number 46, also the spelling of ceiling. Actually, tagancha. So maybe you could treat this as a technical error.
Can we, kindly, can you Ctrl+F to see if there's any other words, the ceiling? Okay, okay. Technical amendment again, thank you, Representative. Further discussions or further amendments? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Chair hears none. With that, all those in favor of adopting the minutes... 33. Okay, hands down, not in favor? With 33 in favor, you're not in favor. Motion is carried and the minutes of the eighth regular session are adopted. Moving forward with our Order of Business, we'll proceed to our unfinished business.
A pleasant afternoon to the Honorable Assembly. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So this resolution is birthed out of the need to have additional CCTV cameras at the Silimban University Gymnasium. Because the SU Gym is one of the most congested and one of the most populated areas in the university. And because of that, many students lose their valuables in the gymnasium. And the sad thing is, many of which lost items are not recovered because of the lack of cameras that can catch the blind spots. And we have consulted with the PE Department, Athletics Department, the CSSO, and the FMAS about this. And the PE Department and Athletics Department told us that out of the 10 CCTV cameras in the gymnasium, only three are functional. And these three functional CCTV's are, cannot cover the entire gymnasium. And many parts of the gymnasium remain as blind spots. Many of the CCTV cameras there are not functional and no longer repairable. So it's not practical to have it repaired because these are no longer repairable. Moreover, we have consulted with the FMAS and they have directed us to CSSO because the CSSO has the budgetary allocation to request from the university to have additional CCTV cameras at the SU Gymnasium. And because of that, we have consulted with CSSO and they agree that the gymnasium needs more CCTV's. And if we look at Appendix A, these are the parts of the gymnasium that the CSSO themselves suggested that the CCTV's be put up. I know, Appendix B is the areas where the CCTV must be put up. And that is suggested and recommended by the CSSO themselves. And upon further recommendation and recommendation and consultation with the CSSO, we have come to a conclusion that although the ICT Department is the one that will be installing the CCTV cameras, it is the CSSO themselves that has the power to directly request from the university to have it installed. So the final say will come from the university through the CSSO. It's just that the ICT Division will be the one to install them. So we no longer had, we no longer requested for a consultation with the ICT Department. because according to the FMAS themselves, the CSSO is sufficient enough to have the CCTV requested from the administration. Thus, this is the resolution that we have come up with.
Department or other constituents Sileman do the CSSO of Marag parang the lack of CCTV's sa gym?
Yeah, actually. And many of which may ni... Marag ni request... kay they actually have the request form ng maka-request ang PE... ang any department in Sileman to CSSO. However, um... malang gibuhat is ni addra ang CSSO, three additional CCTV's that are working. And unfortunately, it's not enough to cover the blind spots in the gymnasium. So there is complaints from the PE Department. And actually, I don't know if I can share this, but at the outside part of the gymnasium, kay na may mga sakyanan diha and na may mga accidents kinaitabo sa sakyanan and dili na siyang makitan ba if who'd caused that accident because wala'y CCTV. And that is one of the reasons why the PE Department has recommended also this resolution.
Okay, so there is already a history na ini-complain and then CSSO acted upon it. So was there another? After the initial Marag action conducted by CSSO by adding three more CCTV's, was there any more complaints raised to them? And was there any other action?
For that, I cannot... I don't actually have awareness if na pay more complaints. But this resolution, mangod kay, many students complained to the PE Department, not directly to CSSO, because of the lack of CCTV cameras. So they complained to the PE Department, but the PE Department cannot produce... the PE Department cannot produce evidence or... and so they ilang gi refer to CSSO. But the CSSO also cannot provide the needed video to find the lost items. So that's why this resolution.
Okay, so last question. So is it safe to assume that after your consultation with CSSO and PE Department that after the passage of this resolution, would there be a significant action taken by the CSSO?
Actually, about that, we... the CSSO told us that this is feasible, but they cannot assure that there would be no extra fees for the students. However, they also told us that there is budgetary allocation.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. So, point of inquiry for... for the area, I mean for the suggestion... camera, for camera one and camera two, is this the final area where you will put the camera? Because... damage or like dili na siyang mga iguubula or other equipments kay na rin siya dilinga area?
For that, the CSSO is the one who suggested that it be placed there. So, logistically, I think they have... they can have precautionary measures also for that because they themselves suggested that.
Thank you. Satisfied, Mr. Chair. Representative Gunot.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to raise a point of inquiry to the proponents regarding... you stated earlier that CSSO is in support of installing these cameras. And you've also stated that they have the power to request these cameras admin because there is a budgetary allocation for the security purposes. And so why do you think it is still a need to be presented as a resolution when the PE Department, the CSSO have worked with you in crafting these resolutions when they could propose themselves the requisition for these cameras?
There is a proposal from the PE Department, I believe, to add additional cameras. But this resolution would put more weight because it's coming from the students themselves that there is a need for more cameras because a lot of valuable items are lost. So this will be part of the synergistic force coming from the PE Department, from the students, and from the CSSO to really put pressure on the administration to add additional cameras.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Representative Macarubo.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I just have a point of inquiry about the fees. If this will be... I'm not sure if you mentioned earlier, sorry, bad memory ko. Would there be added fees on the students for the CCTV's?
That's what's in the resolution. But consultations with the CSSO told us that they cannot assure that there will be no additional fees. But they will try to utilize the budget from the security budget. But that remains in the resolution and that remains binding.
Okay, I just like to confirm. Where did they state if ever fees will be taken? Would it be taken from the university fees, miscellaneous fees, or...?
Yeah, I believe it will come from there because we weren't able to ask where the fees would come from, but logically, it will come from there.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Representative Mohammed.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just to... I would just like to give more weight to Representative Inofarius' question before on the durability of the cameras. So upon research, the most common cameras that could be placed in those areas for wide angle is the circular wide-angle cameras, which upon research is... has a life... So I believe CSSO does know what it's doing and therefore, there is no need to worry about the durability of the camera.
Thank you for that.
Further discussions? Going once? Going twice? Chair hears none. With that, all those in favor of approving this resolution, please raise your hand. All those not in favor? All those in abstention? Thank you, Representatives. So with thirty-four in favor, zero not in favor, zero abstention, this resolution is accepted as is. Congratulations to the proponents.
Thank you, Representatives.
Proceeding forth, we have our next resolution. Representative...
Resolution from the agenda today. May the Chair ask our reason... such the rationale for withdrawing?
If I may be recognized, Mr. Chair, we would still have to consult again with the... we have to consult with the League of Governors and we have to meet with them via... we'll meet or whatever means because this resolution concerns the respective colleges and we think it would be necessary for us to be able to communicate with them before passing this resolution to the Assembly.
Okay. Thank you, thank you proponents for that. With this, this requires a two-thirds vote from the Assembly because this is withdrawing business that was sent to the Assembly. So with this, all those in favor of... oh wait, correction. Are there any seconds to the motion? Thank you. Now, all those in favor of the withdrawal of this resolution, please raise your hand. Not in favor? In abstention? Thank you. So with this, with thirty-three in favor, the resolution is withdrawn from the agenda. Thank you, proponents, and we're looking forward to seeing the resubmission of this resolution. And proceeding forward, we have our election of Committee on Appropriations members. The Chair would like to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, chair hears none. Rules have been suspended. Please cut the recording, please. Sessions called back to order and with that, the House rules are also brought back to the floor. With this, once again, we are now on our unfinished business, which is the election of Committee on Appropriation members. So to summarize the unfinished business, we've had five nominees, once again, namely Representative Azoa, Representative Arbon, Representative Macahig, Representative Tevez, and Representative Hamera. With this, the floor is still open for twelve more nominees because whoever we elect as treasurer in the other matters will automatically be made internal vice-chairperson. Or if... or whoever we put in the interim of treasurer. So with this, the motion is already pending that nominations are open. So with this, requesting first the majority floor to lay down their new nominations.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Our... we have seven nominees, namely Representative Rendon, Representative Inao, Representative Gunot, Representative Lim, Representative Renasia, Representative Dipilio, and Representative Ferrer.
Okay, so just as before, we will be asking these people individual... sorry, these representatives individually if they accept the nomination. So I will be doing it from left to right. Representative... uh, wait first. Dipilio, sorry. Thank you, Captain. Do you accept the nomination? Okay, Representative Ferrer, do you accept the nomination? Representative Renasia. Representative Lim. Representative Rendon. Do you volunteer to accept? Representative Gunot. Representative Inao. Okay. All seven new nominees from the Majority Floor have accepted and are now in contention for the... for members of the Committee on Appropriations. Thank you, Majority Floor. Minority Floor, may I... may the Chair request your official new nominees?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. From the Minority Floor, we have four nominations. We have Representative Valleser, Representative Mohammed, Representative Samson, and Representative Malolot. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Representative Samson, do you accept? Representative Malolot? Representative Mohammed? Representative Valleser? Okay, the nominees of the Minority Floor have accepted. Representative Kalumpang?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Since there is lacking one, I would like to nominate Representative Amante as the last member.
Representative Amante, do you accept? Reluctantly, yes. Okay. Okay, so with this, shall we make it formal na... oh wait, correction. Are there any motions to close the nomination? Representative... I don't know who was first, but since you're holding the microphone, might as well. Oh, diba?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to close the nomination.
Properly moved and seconded? Nominations are now closed since all the nominees fit the number of members except the internal vice-chairperson. However, again, that will be addressed later on. All those of accepting these seventeen nominees to the Committee on Appropriations, please say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. With this, congratulations to the seventeen members of the Committee on Appropriations. With this, we'll now proceed to our... other matters. With the resignations of the previ... of those previously mentioned, this leaves two positions open in the Committee on Audit. Audit? Ah, sorry, one, just one, just one. Okay. One, this leaves open one membership in the Committee on Audit, treasurer, university health... university health council, one in Committee on Appointments, and one logistics... one logistics. Can I get the confirmation if I'm correct? Logistics, just one? Okay. Following the resignation of Representative Cardenas. So... Would the representatives like another suspension to discuss this? Two in co-op? Oh, sakto. Two in co-op and Deputy Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to raise a... Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to postpone the election of new... the new members for the Committee on Audit to next...
Oh, we don't have to postpone it because the motion has not been made yet. But that's your manifestation. We can do it next session.
Yes, that is my manifestation, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so just Committee on Audit?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So that's just for Committee on Audit. So, once again, our openings are treasurer, deputy majority floor leader, one logistics, two committee on appointments, and university health representative. It was discussed during the caucus that there is someone willing to be interim treasurer until new representatives can be elected or appointed. Either or, so. Representative Azoa.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to open the election for the new Assembly Treasurer. Interim.
Okay. There's been a motion to open the nominations... to open an election and nomination for interim treasurer. Any seconds? Properly moved and seconded. Floor is now open for nominations. Representative Yefloris.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I'm... I'm sorry. I nominate Representative Esteliosso.
You don't have to second. Representative Esteliosso, do you accept this nomination for interim treasurer?
Thank you for... Hello, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon.
Hello.
I accept the position, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Wow, assuming... assuming... accepting the position pagani na close? Okay. Yeah, Representative Macarubo.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of add interim... sorry, for Representative Esteliosso to be add interim treasurer, please say aye. Aye. Not in favor, say nay. Congratulations to our new add interim treasurer, Representative Esteliosso. Your position will... your position will be only until we elect a permanent treasurer for the rest of the term. We have new incoming representatives, pabaya. Anyway, so with this... Rico not here? Where are the members of Co-op gani? One, two, three. Co-op? It's just the two of you? Ay, oh, okay. Do you guys wish to pursue an election today, or you want to wait for more reps? Okay. Okay, thank you. So your two, so your two members, the election of your two members will be postponed. Okay, so Logistics members, please raise your hand. Logistics, please raise your hand. One, two, three. Four. Do you, in the absence of your chairperson, do you wish to pursue an election? I'll give you a minute to head signal each other. Okay, I'm getting a consensus between the majority of the Logistics now, you won't pursue an election today. Okay. There's, there's your other member. Okay, so again, Logistics, just a final confirmation, do you wish to postpone your election? I'm getting, I'm getting a yes and a no at the same time, so please. First the wired mic.
Thank you for the recognition, Mrs. Chair. I actually have a nomination to for the Logistics.
Please, oh, wait, but first, do you guys want to pursue the election? Okay, before that, just make, make it a manifestation. Just, who do you wa, who do you wish to nominate?
I wish to nominate Representative Harbon here from, uh, sorry. Harbon, yes, correct, from CED, considering his close proximity to the BFO. To be quite a good asset in the Logistics.
That's a very good rationale, I must add. So, okay, with this, can I get confirmation from the Logistics members if you believe this would be, you're okay with this? In the absence of your chairperson, I believe you're the vice chair? I think, okay, off the record, I think I remember Noli saying that you are, you're his second-in-command. It's an honor kaya. Anyway, so basta, do you, okay, so I'll just ask, do you guys consent, will you guys consent to this? Have, just, just for the sake na, at least you have, you'll be back to capacity. Can I get verbal confirmation, representatives? Okay, so we'll just take it. Representative, please open the nomination.
Thank you for the recognition, Mrs. Chair. I, I motion to open the nominations for the one member in Logistics Committee.
Properly moved and seconded. Nominations?
I shall nominate CED Representative Harbon here for his close proximity to the BFO again, as stated, and that would be a great asset in the Logistics Committee.
Do you accept the nomination, Representative Arbon?
Thank you very much for the recognition. Yes, I will be accepting the nomination.
What's yours? What's yours? Okay, go ahead. Representative Esteliosso?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate
Please stand.
Representative Samson. As, same rationale with Representative Mohamed, is that it's closer sa IMTC, so it's a bit more practical now, since we would want to get MPR quicker. Mas maka inquire ta our pencil book sa IMTC.
Okay, Representative Samson, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are you, okay, do you wish to, are you, do you want to really pursue this, this na? Considering the three position, the, the three current standing positions of Representative Samson?
I would like to withdraw this nomination, Mr. Chair.
Diya? Representative Gunot, still there, saying. Representative Esteliosso?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate Representative Malolot from the College of Mass Communication.
Do you accept?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept.
Okay, we have an election in our hands right now. Okay. I believe someone wished to close the nomination? Rule suspended. Go ahead. BFO or IMTC? Because I, I see. Wait, so, no, 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 wait, let's get the, let's get the opinion of Logistics first before anyone else. I want the opinion of Logistics before anyone else. Are we still recording? Cut, edit this out.
Actually, sa'yun naman ang IMTC kay, gur man siya ipapencil book. Ang kanardud kay, sige kaunahan, mas liso ang BFO kay, daganong papirmahan and um, usahay kay, wala sa dang mga need ipaperma. So, need siya balik-balikan, but like duol na matangtanan sa campus, so narana say mo ang tenacity.
Wow, word of the day. Example sa tenacity, maya? Icon. If I can give my personal opinion on this, I think we already discussed this previously na, we just booked ahead of, like way ahead of time. It's just that this time around, it was harder for, it's, okay, this is not the third Sunday, baya. This is the fourth Sunday right now. So this is a very, I would consider this a special case. So, that's just my opinion on this. Just talk, this house is roses.
For me kay, I think it's more important na mas dalita maka secure sa signature sa BFO kay wala ipulus if maka pencil book ta sa IMTC niya, and ding diligya punta makapasayan sa BFO. So I feel like someone, like, tinuodyo na kung masayon mo atug BFO, kung duol ka sa BFO. Kay, BFO alone is very a discouraging, mag department. So if layo paka mismo niya, pagabot dito, yawyawan paka. Mag, mas better na lang if mas duol ka dito kay, at least masayon dud.
Okay, just, just, just talk freely.
Can I campaign for myself? Okay, but, I have a motor.
Ay, unsa?
I have a motorcycle. Yes.
Okay, candidate number one has a motorcycle. Candidate number two, do you have a motorcycle? Makes sila man affordable.
Mr. Chair, I am compelled to agree that I think it's better if we prioritize at least people who are more convenient with BFO, because there are already four other members who can do the booking of the venue itself.
Okay.
And also, I think at, at the very least, kay, the most important thing, regga, is having people who can actually commit to the role. So that's one thing you have to consider.
Plus, and plus on my end, I, I pretty much signed the permits right away, as much as possible anyway, so that's, we, we've never really had a problem with IMTC booking, in terms of like with IMTC itself. Sa requisition? Me and AJ? Times have changed since your time, Zoe. Sorry, times have changed since our time last year sa EXCOM. Anyway, but yeah, the, kay, the current statement good is that Yeah, it's only five members. Diba? Okay. Okay, so, are we, are we satisfied with the dis, are we satisfied with the informal discussion? Okay.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I would just like to mention again that usually the, what I've noticed in our Logistics Committee, the prob, the main problems we have is not sic, is not, uh, like pencil booking or ganon-ganon, it's mostly with the BFO, because it takes a lot of time. So sometimes, for example, I recall a time where, uh, it was a Wednesday, and then the weather went bad, and then we had to cancel our meeting, no. Our visit to the BFO, and then consecutive day, it made, uh, there were several issues as well, so yeah.
To share lang po't kuya, actually, for Logistics, it should be processed at least two weeks. So I don't necessarily think na main problem dud ang, ang offices, but ang commitment and ang availability sa, sa members.
Okay, so with this, I'll just meet with Logistics after the, after the meeting, after the session. I'll, I'll talk to you guys after this. So again, are there, are we okay now with the discussion? Shall we proceed back to the session? Going once, going twice, rules are brought back to order. With this, um, are there any motions to close the nomination? Properly moved and seconded. Okay, so do you wish, do you wish to give a short speech of your camp, the campaign, or? Okay, go ahead, Representative Arbon, since you're the first nominee.
Thank you for the recognition, Mrs., Mr. Chair. Thank you for the nomination. I would like to campaign for, for myself as the, as a member of the Logistics. Firstly, I have a motorcycle with a gate pass, so mobility will not be an issue for me. Second of all, I, uh, I'm free academic-wise, where I am available Wednesdays and a good portion of the afternoon on Tuesdays and Fridays. So yes, please pick me. Thank you.
Representative Malolot, do you wish to give a speech? Someone pass the microphone, please. Oh, thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, for me, I have experience with BFO, especially in kanang mga requisition, because sa maskom, we have kanang tighandog podog events, but I would like to ask you guys to vote to, uh, Representative Albon, ay, Arbon, rather. Kay, lagin na siya y motor, and, uh, mas duol siya, and ako di, kay, koavailable pod. Thank you!
Thank you. With this, all those in favor of Representative Arbon, please raise your hand. Zed, ah, sorry, Speaker Potenbori? Okay, all those in favor of Representative Malolot? Look around. Okay, thank you, representatives, with twenty-nine votes. Oh, no, if you don't vote, automatic abstain. Okay, fine, all those in abstention. Okay. Uh, with this, with twenty-nine votes, the majority has voted for, majority of the assembly has voted for Representative Arbon. So congratulations to our new Logistics member. Moving forward, okay, so we've postponed, we're postponing Committee on Audit and Appropri, uh, sorry, Audit and Appointments. Does the Majority Floor wish to have a, have, to conduct a caucus for their, to elect their Deputy Majority Floor Leader? Oh, sorry, to designate a Deputy Majority Floor Leader?
I move for a five-minute recess, Mr. Chair.
Session suspended for five minutes. Sessions called back to order. We will re, late, maybe within the session, we can revisit the Deputy Majority Floor designation and recognition. So with this, we're still in the Other Matters section. And with this, the Chair would like to relinquish his seat to the Majority Floor Leader. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, chair is none, Majority Floor Leader is presiding.
Okay, we are still in Other Matters. Are there any other matters that need to be discussed? Representative Amante, you are recognized. Okay, Representative Amante, you may proceed with your privileged speech.
So, good afternoon, honorable Assembly. I am here to give a privileged speech following the State of the Student Body Address. So first off, I would like to congratulate all of us here, the 35th Student Assembly, for a productive and effective first semester of service. So honestly, hearing our output and our progress being presented by the President during the recent State of the Student Body Address was motivating and inspiring for me as your speaker because we're hearing every, we're hearing all of the legislation that we have passed. And as well, when we released the first semester SUSG Transparency Report, all of our business conducted was released. And hopefully, all of the representatives were able to read it. Or if not, we can send a condensed version of our transparency report so that you may be, so you may see what has been done. So with this, I would like to make my speech to the Assembly as one of encouragement and one of a challenge to all of us. First off, I'd say encouragement because the feedback I have received personally as your speaker and as representative is positive notes. I ask people of, I ask people of past SUSGs and students from the, and current students. I have received positive feedback on our assembly that we are an improvement of past assemblies and we are doing good and our resolutions and output are forward and progressive. So with this, my challenge to us is that we keep going. Our assembly is, has still so much left to go on. We have, and we still have so much potential, untapped potential, that we as representatives have to actively seek out. So allow me, as your speaker and as a current representative as well, to encourage everyone here to ask your respective constituents, whether it be your respective councils or ask just the students themselves, ask them what problems can this assembly help resolve? Because hearing in the State of Student Body Address during the open forum with the university administration, there are problems that are not being tackled by the SUSG and the admin. And with this, hearing all of these problems that were related to the university administration, the SUSG Student Assembly can help. And with this, I am, it is my hope and my encouragement to everyone here that we actively seek out these problems, not just wait for the, not just waiting for them to be made public to the, to, on a forum, that we actively try to solve problems before they're made public and try to solve problems before they fester into something that affects the wider university. So with this, I am praying and hoping that the Student Assembly can keep moving forward with the progress because, again, we are receiving positive feedback, but deep down inside, there may be students holding grudges or negative feedback that we are not addressing problems. So with this, let us try to prevent that from happening by actively seeking out these problems that we can solve through legislation, through letters to the administration, and through advocating and facilitating discussions between the SUSG and the administration. So allow me to end my speech by, once again, congratulating everyone on a productive first semester. We're halfway there and hopefully, we can finish strong. Thank you, thank you, representatives.
Thank you, Representative Amante. Are there any further discussions or questions you wish to raise to Representative Amante? The Chair here is none. The Chair would like to relinquish her presiding seat back to the Speaker of the Student Assembly. Are there any objections? Chair here is none. The presiding seat is hereby relinquished.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. With this, may the Chair request if there is an update on the designation of Deputy Majority Floor Leader? If there is none, we can always do it in the next session. Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. We would proceed with the elections within the day. However, the recognition of the Deputy Majority Floor Leader would perhaps be done on the next session.
Okay. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. With this, are there other matters that we wish to, that need to be brought up? Representative Temes?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. I would like to go back to the Excuse Letter of Representative Rawa.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for bringing that back. The letter has been received and I requested the Secretary add it to the Order of Business. Can we please present it? Thank you for the reminder. Okay. Are there any motions to accept? Representative Brendan.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to accept the Vice Excuse Letter of Representative Rawa.
Properly moved and seconded. Any objections? Going once, going twice, chair is none. This excuse letter is accepted. Congratulations? Apologies, apologies. Okay. It was brought up by, it was brought up to the Speaker by our secretary. We also still have the University Health Council representative. So present with us now are some representatives from allied health courses. So would, does the Assembly wish to proceed with our election for this? Representative Estelios, you are recognized. Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm hearing, I'm hearing suggestions to postpone to the next session. Is the Assembly in agreement with this? Okay, thank you. So that concludes, or not really concludes... Are there any other, are there any other matters that need to be brought up? Okay, we should now proceed to announcements. I believe both InfoTech and our Speaker Proton Borri have something to announce? InfoTech, do you have anything to announce in regards to the polos? Yes.
All right, good afternoon, Assembly. So we have already completed the canvassing and the final designs for the polo shirt and now is commencing the collection of payment for the polo shirts. However, to rank on as well on this, I would like to ask the Assembly right now is that, as of right now, we already have a design for the IDs. As I believe we already sent it previously and showed it in previous sessions. However, I'd like to ask, since this was also not yet final, on the decision with the Assembly is that would the, would everyone prefer that we would all have a uniform color on our ID slings? Or would we prefer it to be each college color for your ID sling? Uniform?
Representative Rawa.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just like to raise a point of inquiry. If we do decide to have it more separate colors basing on the college color, would that mean na customize siya so that would entail na mas higher ang prices? Or same raba siya? Okay, colored.
Can you further expound your answer? Please return the microphone.
So on this is that, since the question is, it would be varying on prices if it's different colors. However, in this concept is that it would be heavier in the price. It's just the same lang. And if we ever do a uniform color, we, when discussion with Mr. Chair regarding this is that we wanted it more bright since in previous assemblies and in previous, majority of like uniforms regarding SUSG, it's been quite dark colors and more minimalistic. So what we really did is that we wanted it more bright. So the colors that we chose right now is red and white. So is that okay with the Assembly if we do uniform colors?
Can you present the design? And just for further context, if you look at the Assembly page, if you look at the 30th Assembly moving to us, for some reason, the color scheme gets darker. So it doesn't really give us, it doesn't really present a positive note. Each Assembly progressively becomes darker. So hence the decision, we tried to make it brighter. Okay. Representative Makarubo.
Yeah, it's free.
Oh, yeah.
It's charged, it's char, it's charged, we're charging the lanyards to the Assembly Fund. It does still reflect, but in the end, we also, we also get lanyards. And this decision was already made much in, like, in much prior, priorness.
So if it's white, everyone, this is the design of our lanyard. But can you next slide, please? So if we would choose it in different colors, it would look like this.
May we hear any manifestations and sentiments from the representatives? Go ahead.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Can I request the InfoTech to go back to the previous slide? Diba, you guys mentioned that the color scheme was supposed to be red and then white? That looks maroon or darker than maroon and gray. So I feel like this is a good concept. I like this concept. It looks clean and it would be better for us kaya unified da. But I think it looks like, it's too similar to the 33rd. And from the sentiment shared by the Mr. Chair earlier that we are deviating from darker colors, I think we are not really deviating from darker colors if we stick to this color scheme. So that's just my sentiments for now.
For context, this is what the 34th lanyard looks like. Pin excluded. So yeah, it's... So yeah, this is what their current, this is what the standing lanyard looks like from the 34th. So before we proceed with the design specifically, I'd just like to ask the Assembly which would they prefer? If it's per college color or unified color? So that when we send the next design, we base it on that?
All in favor of uniform, please raise your hand. Okay, it seems almost unanimous, so, uniform.
This is noted. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so notes that you're, notes that we're getting is make it less maroon and less gray.
This is noted, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
So rest assured, this lanyard will be charged to Student Assembly Fund. So the only thing you reps will have to pay for is the shirt. So the only thing you reps will have to pay for is the shirt. So just allow the chair- allow the speaker to encourage everyone to pay as soon as possible para we can get production started. Okay, are there further announcements needed to be made? Infotech?
Okay. There is another announcement we wish to address. Recent- quite recently, the speaker pro tempore and I released a teaser for our Christmas part- for us holiday- we call it holiday party because we have people of different faiths. So we'll just say holiday party. So tentative date is December 7, immediately after our... Patay. Immediately after our next regular session. So... Why did you present it? This was not supposed to be for public viewing. Okay, it's too late now. Just keep it up. Okay.
Can I make the formal announcement?
Go ahead.
So the Christmas party will be on. The tentative date right now that we've talked about is December 7. So in case if you have any prior commitments or anything planned for the future, perhaps you can consider making December 7 or holding space for the session and the Christmas party. So basically, the splash assembly or the Christmas party will happen after the session. So it's gonna be a nighttime party. It's around like, let's say if the session ends around 5:00 PM, we're going to- we have like perhaps 30-minute grace period and then mga 5:30 to 6:00 kay mag-Christmas party nata. And then our venue will be in, it's called Janelin Space. It's basically like a pool area within Dumagueta City area because we also wanted to consider for it to be convenient to especially our senior high reps and our junior high reps in case dili sila sugtan silang parents. So we wanted to make it convenient. So it's within Dumagueta City area. It's around Daro area, that area lang siya. We can also send a location for- but that's also the tentative venue for now. And regarding the costs, for the entrance fee, that will be covered by the assembly fund. For the food however, that will be bring your own food per college. So each college will be talking- tackling it more later on. But each college will be assigned, or they will be assigning themselves to a certain set of food. So for example, one college will be for the viands, one college will be for the beverages, one college for the dessert, something like that. So bring your own food lang. And then for our gift exchange, we'll do it through a white elephant mechanism. Basically, you're just every- anyone who will be going there will bring lang a gift that they will wrap. It has to be a unisex gift. And basically, we'll be choosing lang whichever gift you want and it can be stolen. I think everybody will send up with the guidelines of the white elephant mechanism. But it's basically just like, you can get gifts and you can also steal other people's gifts. But everybody has a gift by the end, of course. So yes, please take note of December 7. That's around 6:00 to 10:00 PM for the Christmas party. Thank you so much.
Off the record.
To accommodate, to accommodate our solo reps ICLS, can she join- can she join you guys IRS? Mag- mag- same sa mukay. Kay, she's... How do I- how do I make this sound less offensive? She's on her own for now. Oh, grad school? Oh, trust me. Me and Med and Law are together on this. Diba? Mang old school, okay.
Also, if it's okay for the rest of the assembly, we'd like to also get your permission. If it's okay with everyone, if we also invite the representatives who also resigned, since they're kind of still part of the family. Is that okay with everyone?
Okay, I revoke your thing.
Okay, so yes, good job. That was also discussed. Thank you. So with this, hope to see you guys there. We've been planning this for a while and we believe this will help us moving forward, you know, with building connections with each other. So with this, further announcements? Oh, the theme is... The theme is summer in December. So just dress pang- just dress in summer. But take note, don't dress like that sa session. Kasi yo, I take note, please. So yeah, so asta, we'll have a grace- hope like depending on when our thing- on our session ends, we'll have the grace period then. We'll also address- address- we'll also organize kanang, you know, travel and logistics and you know, just transportation. That's what I'm looking for, transportation. Kay, some of the- some of us reps here have cars so hopefully requesting knife, those who are willing to drive people to and from. Request- requesting lang, you don't have to say yes. Anyway, so that concludes our discussion on, for now, for splash assembly. Okay, further announcements needed? Okay. Sorry. Okay.
We now proceed to our adjournment. Representative Azoa.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to adjourn the ninth regular session for the semester.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning our session, please say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? With this, our- the ninth regular session, the 35th student assembly is hereby adjourned. All rise for the closing ceremonies.
How do we do this?